Let's stand for the vice president. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stand for a moment of silence. So in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10-4-6, adequate notification of this meeting has been provided by advertising at the record and posting notice in the Board of Education Administration Building at a veno education center and filing notice with the city clerk. I hereby call to order the special meeting Wednesday, February 11, 2025, in the Board of Education Administrative Building, 191 Second Street, Hackensack, New Jersey, 07601, at 6:16 PM. Miss Stink, can you do a roll call, please? Ms. Amer Hamza, passing, Mr. Carroll? Yeah? Ms. Gudir Rauten?
Here.
Ms. Yelmore?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Pringle?
Present.
Present. Mr. Stein?
Present.
You have a call. Perfect. All right, so presentations there are none. Be it resolved at the Hackensack Board of Education, determine is it necessary to meet an executive session on Wednesday, February 11, 2025, to discuss legal personnel, student-related matters, HIV reports, negotiations, and other confidential matters. And be it further resolved that these matters will be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have a motion to go to both sessions? A motion?
I'll second.
By trustee Pringle and second by trustee Stein. All those in favor say aye. Hosts? Excellent. We will notify the public when we are out of full session. Thank you. All right, so here's the meeting. It's just putting the...
Because the scene is not one.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we are back at the close. It is eight p.m. We are going to go into our public comments section, and I'm going to read our district policy, 0167, public participation in board meetings. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the board shall set aside a portion of every board meeting. Lack of a portion is determined by the board of public comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. One, a participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must reflect his comments by an announcement of his or her name, nationality of residence, age group affiliation, and public soul. Two, last year. Each statement made by participant shall be permitted to three minutes duration during the public session. Three, all statements, questions, or inquiries shall be directed to the presiding officer, and any questions or inquiries directed by a participant to another board member shall be redirected to the presiding officer who shall determine if such statement, question, or inquiry shall be addressed by the presiding officer on behalf of the board or by the individual board member. Four, all board and/or superintendent responses to questions or inquiries shall be held until the end of public participation. Five, the presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's statement, question, or inquiry when it is too lengthy. B, interrupt and/or warn our participant when the statement, question, or inquiry is abusive, obscene, or may be discriminatory. C, request any person to leave the meeting when the person does not observe reasonable decorum. D, request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when that person prevents or disrupts a meeting with an act that obstructs or interferes with the meeting. E, call for a recess or an adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. And F, waive these rules when necessary for the protection of privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting. At this time, we are open for public comments. Where we got here? Uh, you just snap up, there's no microphone.
My name is Donna. This is Secretary Carla. I'm a resident. If I'd like to be explaining how the conference was. I wanted to just briefly bring the image of the board and hope to be asked some answers. I realize maybe not today, but just to be aware. One concern I have is there's no nurse in the building for care management. And I believe that this is for every elementary school throughout time inside. As emergency doctors, I realize the importance of having a nurse there in an emergency, and I think it should possibly address that coverage be provided to all the elementary schools during this time. I believe the middle school and high school have two nurses, so they can relieve each other. But I think in a school with young kids, there should be a nurse there at all times. My first thing. My second thing is substitutes. I understand the district is short on substitutes, and I guess they're having difficulty filling the positions. But there've been a few times where, that I'm aware of, that the classes have been split. I guess you'll probably not have a substitute for the class. I wonder if it could possibly be that they do a job fair for parents, because I understand many parents would rather take a sick day, vacation day, and cover their child's class than to have no substitute or have a exceptionally large class where the kids are not learning. I myself would be interested in doing it, and I spoke to a couple of other parents, so if that's something they could do to maybe fill the positions. And lastly, my... It's I'm coming home with pink paper, which I thought was for Valentine's Day, but I was made aware today. It's because they don't have any white paper in the schools, and because of the budget being frozen, they can't get it. So I don't know if that could be something that is...
Just to clarify, what school did you say?
Nellie K Parker.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amanda Rea. I also have two children at Nellie K Parker, one in pre-K, one in first grade. And honestly, I am here to kind of piggyback on what Donna says. I have pretty much the same concerns as her. I have two children, both who have anaphylaxis towards peanuts, and it is very concerning that there's no nurse in the school for that lunch period. And from my understanding, she also covers other schools. So I'm not even sure if there's coverage during the times where she's covering other schools or who the nurse may be at the time that that... I understand that there may be a crisis team, but it's just very concerning in the event that somebody does have allergic reaction because it's not a nut-free school district. It's, you know, we don't know if the crisis team can get in there in time with having to go all the way to the nurse's office to get my kids' heavy patents and, you know, do what they have to do to hopefully save their lives. So it's concerning with kids being that young. And also, the fact that it's not a nut-free district is a bit concerning, too. I know there are other nut-free school districts, and I understand that they may not be able to implement those rules in public places. But there are other districts in, like, other states and even within the state that are nut-free to make sure that our kids with those allergies are protected at all times. So the suggestions are great, I understand that, but there may be a kid that comes into school with Nutella because their parents don't have to deal with being aware of other kids and their allergies. And to piggyback on what Donna said about the paper, if there's a shortage in funds, maybe reach out to parents. They can bring in school supply if they need it. I'm more than happy to go to Staples and buy a full box of paper. As a parent, I... My kid's education is important, so I have no problem donating, or if I start a fundraiser if you're short on funds with school supplies, I'm happy to donate to that as well. And then substitute teachers, I'm also one of the parents that are happy to volunteer and contribute to help the school district out. That's... I have the same concerns as Donna, but I just wanted to add emphasis on the fact that my kids have allergies, and there has been an incident where cookies that contained nuts were served in one of, like, the Thanksgiving events that they had, and luckily I was there to have them pretty much removed it from serving students. So let's just...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two questions concerning this district with the lawyer. This lawyer didn't come on until the actual February 5th board meeting, so how long were we without a lawyer in this district? And the other is a couple of agendas back, I would say, back of the 2024. From my understanding, hiring an in-house attorney was on the agenda, and that was to save money, and it was part of the district's corrective action plan. So why are we not meeting our corrective action plan? Somebody needs to answer that as well. Thank you.
Is anybody out of line? Anybody else in the public? Any out there, please? Okay, so just to thank you so much for coming on and for waiting for us to be done. I guess I will just defer over to you guys. If we don't have an answer at this time, then we will follow up with that. It's definitely very important that we do have a nurse, especially during lunch, but we'll...
But one I can clarify, there's no freeze, there's no shortage of supplies, there's an abundance of supplies. I'm not sure who communicated and why it was communicated, but I want to kind of get everyone to clear their understanding that our school has abundant resources. They don't need to go buy anything. So we'll figure out what and why it's communicated, and we'll make sure that is reflected by me.
Thank you.
I thought the thing was for Valentine's Day. No, because I've got green papers, too, so, yeah.
Maybe I was just making everybody in the mood. And just to answer the question about our interim council, so I had stated at our last board meeting, when our interim council was appointed, that our prior council, they resigned January 31, 2025, and due to unforeseen circumstances with prior council's ability to represent us, there's a slight gap between our former council and the award of our new council, which will be selected within the next few weeks, as we have an open RFP right now. So that was back in February 5. And that's when we had the resolution, and we hired Annalene Hicks. We can't go into the details of it, as it is attorney-client privilege in terms of how much we can divulge out into the public. But that is why we had the RFP. The RFP closed February 6, and today we will be appointing a council, official board council.
That wasn't a question. The question was how long was the district without an attorney? That was the question.
Well, that again is attorney-client privilege.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, is there anybody else on? Anything else? Okay, so now closes our public... There was. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, my name is Riza Mendoza, and I also have a child at Nellie K Parker. And I know, I forgot who mentioned that there are plenty of resources at Nellie K Parker, but my son also came to class, I mean, home, complaining about how his class had a lack of white paper. And my son is, you know, he has an IEP, and it frustrated him that he didn't have access to white paper that day. I asked why. He said he wasn't sure, and then I responded to him that I'd be glad to provide white printing paper to the class. I found it odd that something so simple could be missing from a school classroom. I feel like that's just such a minute thing that I could have gotten for his class, and he said that he told the teacher that, whether the teacher told him that, you know, they... she wasn't accepting, you know, basically donations from parents for white printing paper. So I initially thought it was just, you know, his classroom. I wasn't aware that this was happening across the school, and so I'm wondering how there's this lack of, I guess, communication or, you know, allocation of resources where, you know, we're being told that there are resources, but a few classrooms in the same school are saying that they don't have it. So I'm wondering if that's just a blip or if that's, you know, because again, like someone said, we're happy to donate as parents both our time and our resources when our kids need these needs to be met, so, thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, public comments is closed. We're going to move on to our resolutions. Uh, resolutions for our legal counsel. So be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education approves the appointment of Dakota's Fitzpatrick Cole and Giblin Legal Counsel to represent the Board of Education from February 12, 2025, to January 31, 2026, at the following rate of $185 per hour for attorneys and $125 per hour for paralegal services. And be it further resolved that Jason Winamater will be the primary contact and coordinating 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 attorney. And be it further resolved, all bills shall be forwarded to the board secretary for review and the processing for payments. And I have a motion to approve of legal counsel.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry. I apologize. Let me just fix what I had just stated. So the rate for... The hourly rate for the attorneys is $185 per hour, and the paralegal is 90. I apologize. My apologies. It's 90 per hour for paralegal services. Thank you. Back to the motion. So can I have a motion to approve of legal counsel?
Motion.
Okay, motion by trustee...
Yelmore.
Yelmore? Can I have a second?
A second.
Second by trustee Pringle. Miss Stink, can you do a roll call, please? Yes. Ms. Amer Hamza? Yes. Mr. Carroll, is that... Ms. Gudir Rauten?
No, and all the reasons stated to the entire board during the process.
Yelmore? Yes. Martin?
Yes.
Pringle?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you. On to personnel. Trustee Armanza.
Yes, we have two items to offer for consideration, items A1 and A2.
Okay, so trustee Armanza, motion. Can I have a second? Okay, trustee Pringle. Miss Stink, can you do a roll call, please? Ms. Amer Hamza?
Yes.
Ms. Gudir Rauten?
Yes.
Yelmore?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Pringle?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Motion passes. Excellent. On to committee relations. Do we have anything for committee relations?
Um, just that I met with the trustees that will be on the committee with me, and everyone is excited. We have our final committee, and we will be scheduling our first meeting soon.
Excellent. Thank you. At this moment, we don't have other committees, any new business. Okay, and then we're on to our second public comments, and this time individuals may address the board on agenda or school matters of community interest for one minute. Everybody online? Okay, there are none. Second public comment is closed. Board comments. All right.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming in person. Ladies, I would just like to let you know that I myself am severely allergic to a number of items, including Nutella. And I carry an EpiPen with me, and it is and can be very scary and life-threatening. I understand the concern. I'm very sorry. There are definitely issues statewide, countrywide, with regards to nurses and staffing, but I do know that our superintendent and HR administration are truly working effortlessly to try and fulfill all those decisions. Please keep coming. Please keep letting us know if it's not resolved. And again, I really do understand the severity of anaphylaxis. I myself have experienced it, and it's... You can die. So I would like to let you know, in an extent that I believe likely everyone would feel the same way. I would like to address something that specifically took place at the last board meeting that I was in attendance to. Trustee Amer Hamza made a comment when I was asking with regards to certain items on policy. I would like to ask that not only trustee Amer Hamza, but other trustees of this board offer me the courtesy of asking if I did my due diligence before you actually assume otherwise and then publicly state otherwise. Currently, I have several unanswered emails to both President and trustee Maury Harris, as well as Vice President and trustee Stein. I've ensured to CC you, Mark, on everything that I send directly to President and trustee Maury Harris. I have emails that are as recent as February 4th, unanswered, and they go as far back as January 15th, unanswered. However, it has been put to me that President and trustee Harris require an answer in under an hour on something pretty important. I've stopped my day so that you can do a straw poll. I answered your call. I responded to you. I've responded to you via text with questions to which trustee Amer Hamza is also on. So the fact that I'm still waiting on information from January 15th is completely unacceptable, but I do ask relevant questions. Had I been assigned to a committee or had there been a document forwarded to all trustees as was being done before, I would be able to look at that, see if I have questions further than what's being provided, and then again, go about that same procedure by asking. And I also believe that I sent you an email in explaining, again, both of you, explaining the process that I have maintained and continue to maintain and will contain for the next and last year, but have maintained for the past two years. Nothing's changed. So again, I ask that each of you afford the courtesy of asking me before you publicly try to shame me. It's very unacceptable, very inappropriate. Deliberative and efficient manner. Deliberative and efficient manner. So we have two policies that I am going to publicly state will require that regulations be attached to them, and they're regarding the attorney process and items that full board should be privy to and aware of and voting on. That would be policies 0174 and 0177. They don't speak to very much, and they should be elaborated on. So the individuals on those committee, on that committee, along with the chair, trustee Shivani Pringle, again, policies 0174, 0177. Deliberative and efficient manner. Both of those policies state that exact same thing, and it's in regards to how things are offered, how trustees are advised, and the information. In the two years that I've been on the board, I've not experienced the process and the manner that it's recently been handled. I got confirmation tonight from the current board attorney interim, Hicks Madeline, right, that this was all acceptable behavior, all appropriate, right? It's what you said, all appropriate, and JSBA would agree, but you also agree in your legal expertise that it's all being done above board appropriately. However...
That was not my... What was commented on, I would not relay what will be discussed in closed in public. That's my recommendation, that will be discussed in closed as legal counsel, and I would also disagree without framing. However, I would just say that what we discussed in closed session, which is attorney-client privilege, should not be discussed in public.
Gotcha. I did... You guys can call NJSPA if you would like to write up the ethics charges. I understand. However, again, that was the context. That is what was discussed, that there were things being done here that I was questioning with regards to legal and this process, and the comment that you made was that...
No, I'm...
This is a recommendation.
I'm just counseling you for moving forward
Yeah.
...for what was discussed in closed to how that's being framed for the public. That's all you really...
Absolutely.
You can say a lot, that's just what my...
Yeah, absolutely. No, understood. So again, one of the emails that I had sent to trustee, President trustee Maury Harris, was with regards to your interim hire. I am not under the impression that that should have been unilaterally decided.
It was not. So trustee Kader, you're now stepping into lines of attorney-client privilege. You were given the opportunity to reach out, however...
I emailed you, and you didn't respond.
But that's point wise, no.
Point A, let's bring it up. I have it. You can open it. Bridgette! Bridgette, the Oprah queen!
So this is not the time for that. You are out of line.
No, but don't call me a liar. Don't call me a liar. I have it here. Would you like to read it?
You are entitled...
Would you like to read it? I can.
Justine Kader-Auland, you are entitled to your own opinion, but not your own facts.
Those are my facts. It's in the email with everybody on it.
You were given, along with older trustees, old trustees, I spent 30 minutes on the phone explaining the situation.
You did?
Absolutely.
What day was that?
And you refused.
What day was that?
You said, "I am fine." That's exactly what you said. You were fine.
I was fine with what?
So you were given that opportunity...
None of that ever happened. None of that ever happened.
Because we're gonna move on.
None of that ever happened. So show me the receipts, and I will share mine. They're open.
Uh, trustee Martin, we can go ahead.
Yes. First, I'd like to thank the public for coming tonight. I really am glad you was able to come out, and please do come with your concerns. It's very important to us, especially, you know, with the nurse, isn't it? I concur. I'm sure our superintendent will look into that matter and get back to you. I hope you sign... Everyone signed a sheet?
Yes.
That's our contact information, and our superintendent will take that and get back to you with some answers. You mentioned, only I heard that, but we did have a nurse doing lunchtime.
Is there her lunch, when she places her lunch?
It's not...
So it's only a short period, but it's in every... So it's an hour, a lot can happen.
Yeah, no, no. And the hats. But I'm sure our superintendent will work that out and then I'll get back to you with that. The... He wrote us our paper. He, Ms. McBlyer explained that, I think, pretty much, that I haven't heard of any freeze on any budget or anything, so I think we're pretty good there. I think that will just... I think that's something that's a missing piece in that puzzle. That's missing because we're doing color, giving out papers with colors on that particular day, whatever. But our superintendent took care of that. And of course, I know there are some schools that aren't nut-free, and I agree that, you know, that's an issue. Maybe, you know, down the road, we can look into it as boards, work with our superintendent. He'll come up with suggestions and bring it back to us, and we'll work with that, whatever it may be. I'm sure it'll be an intelligent decision that he'll give us. But please, and everyone... But please, and everyone else that's watching, come out. Those are important concerns. We need to hear those things like that. And thanks again for coming out. And, um, that's it. Just everyone get home safe and, and that's it.
Justine Amir Hamza.
Yeah, I want to reiterate our thanks for bringing all of this information to us. And we hope that other folks who are listening will participate in our meetings. Whether you come here in person or provide your comments via Zoom. It's really important that we hear from you directly. And I know that all of us really want to make sure that all of the public health concerns are addressed. You know, Dr. McBride takes that very seriously and will look into all of that information. I do also just want to again acknowledge all of the work that Dr. McBride and, and his team of administrators, as well as all of our staff are doing to ensure that all of our, our staff, students, and all of our community feel safe and welcome at our schools. And so again, I just point out to our families that there are a number of resources that are posted on the district website for anyone with concerns as an immigrant student or immigrant family or staff or a member of the LGBTQ community. I also just want to remind folks that tomorrow, February twelfth, is preschool open enrollment. So everyone, please look online to apply. That begins at ten AM. And there's all of the preschool online registration. So please definitely take advantage of that tomorrow, February twelfth. I do also want to congratulate the new board council and thank all of the firms that submitted their applications and took their time to meet with us today. And again, I want to offer congratulations to our newest board member who will hopefully be sworn in then at our next meeting on February twenty-sixth. So everyone can come out and offer their support to our newest board member. And hope that everyone is safe and stays warm from this impending weather.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Pringle.
Okay, I'm sorry to hear about the situation within that allergy. I wasn't aware that you had that allergy as well. But I'm sure stuff like that, hopefully going forward, we can look into and make sure that, I always thought that there, before activities happened, that there was a list to go out if, or a paper to go out to state whether or not people had allergies or the kids had allergies to things. So hopefully that's still continuing. As far as the paper, I mean, everybody can make their comments. I'm gonna leave it for Dr. McBride to, to really look into that. For me, if anybody knows me, I just want to say there's some days, you know, leaving from here. And with everything that's going on in the world, since I was like four years old, there was always a song that resonated to me and didn't understand it until I became an adult. And I understand now, when I leave from here or when I'm having stressful moments. Nineteen seventy-six, Stevie Wonder, "Love's a Need of Love Today." One of my favorite songs. When I leave here from there, I'm gonna listen to that song. It may just sound mediocre to you guys. If you pay attention to the words in that song, then you'll understand where I'm coming from. My heart goes out to everybody, you know?
Thank you. Justine Gilmore.
I thank you for coming and sharing your concerns. I'm a proud student of Big Hill. At the time, I was the second class to attend. So that school is near and dear to my heart. So thank you for sharing your, your kid's and your child's experience. And we will work hard to take care of that. But I do want to share this past Friday night, I had the privilege of being invited to an event that was in Inglewood for Heart Month. Everyone who knows me knows how near and dear the heart is to me. It was the National Coalition of a Hundred Black Women. And they put on a wellness program. They had a panel of, one of the leading black cardiologists, Dr. Marcus L. Williams, a dietitian, and a woman who gave her testimony about having triple bypass surgery without even knowing that she needed it. There was a chef there. He was cooking, showed us how to make healthy food. A fitness instructor to show how you can, you know, exercise just by sitting up and down in a chair. So there's no excuse to, to move. So moving is the key to a healthy heart. It's not the end all be all, but it does help. So for Heart Month, you know, just remember to, to be healthy, make smart decisions, and, and keep your heart healthy because you're what you want.
Yes, thank you. And you may not know, but trustee Gilmore appears on the board on Route Four along with her son. So it's the next time you're on Route Four, just hold out for me to hear that.
But don't cause an accident.
Okay.
Yeah, probably it was gracious enough to, to, um, feature my son and I on, on a billboard for Heart Month because of what happened to my son, who arrested, but who was miraculously saved with ninety minutes of CPR. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Vice President Stein.
I appreciate the fact that we're hearing things about Parker School. I'm sure it's not isolated to Parker. My kids, we're adults now, it's hard to believe, graduated from Nellie K. Parker School. You raised the issue about parents volunteering to cover class. To me, although I'm not an attorney and I will reach out to our law firm now, it raised a number of questions about liability. Number one, are the parents that would volunteer or are they trained in general nursing? Number two, all employees, whether they be teachers, staff, board members, we go through a background check as well as having our fingerprints taken. So this opens up a number of issues. It's greatly appreciated that parents would volunteer. Back in the day, we used to volunteer. Now, the way society is, it's a lot harder to find volunteers with the proper backgrounds. So that will be something that I'm sure the board will discuss going further. We're very pleased that we now have a, a law firm in place that's very diverse, not only in school law, but all types of law. And we, as a board, look forward to working with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, I'm gonna reiterate what everyone said. Thank you for, for coming out and giving us your feedback on what's going on. Student safety is number one. Staff safety is also number one for us. And I just love the idea of parent volunteers because, you know, as parents, we are going to be in it a hundred and ten percent. So if there is that opportunity for parents to come in and maybe support us in some way during lunchtime, during recess time, I would love to see it. I think that just builds a community much stronger at, at Parker School. I was also a Parker School parent for a while. And I, I know how close in that of community Parker, Parker is. So the pink paper, I do not know what the explanation is. As a teacher myself, I just think maybe it just happened to be the one that was, the box that was open at the moment. Who knows? It's probably hiding somewhere in the closet. I do want to thank the law firms that applied today, that came to interview. Some of them showed their passion and it was so nice to see that, especially in a night like tonight. Congratulations to our new board council. As a board, we do look forward in working with you. I also want to thank our school staff in communicating about various events that are happening around our school district as a whole. There are just so many events. And I just want to make the disclaimer that us at the board, we try our best to go to as many events as possible. Unfortunately, some of these events happen on the same night. We have personal obligations. So I will make sure that it is our primary focus that we at least have one representative from the board to attend at least to one of these events. As long as we know about it, we will be there. But please continue to keep us alerted about these events. I want to thank the trustees for taking their time in the selecting central office for last minute changes, for phone calls in terms of how are we gonna do this process. Just for clarity purposes and for those of you who were not on the board previously, the way the board selection process did not happen this way the last time. Trustees were not all involved in choosing former counsel. It was a small committee who chose it last time. As a matter of fact, questions that were apparently used during those board interviews in previous times could not be found. So we had to start from scratch. And I knew, when I was cut out of that process, I knew that this process could not mirror that. So that's why I made sure that all trustees had the opportunity, which they all did, to reach out and get the information that they needed. We made sure that central office had the information so that they could send it out to all the trustees. So they could have the links, have all the information available to them. That was never given to me when I was on the board. In terms of answering questions, I am always available to answer questions whether you choose to reach out or not. Whether you choose to add your own comments after the fact and say you're going to do your own research, that's on you. But I have spent my time speaking to every single person on this dais at all times of the hours to answer those questions. It is your duty as a board member to protect the district. And if you choose to go otherwise, we all know that there are ethics charges. So please be mindful of how you speak to the public and how you speak to others. I hope everyone gets home safe. Hopefully, we don't get a last note. And that is the end of my comments. And I have a motion to adjourn. A motion by trustee Stein. Set, set by trustee Pringle. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, meeting is closed at eight forty-nine. Thank you, everyone.